We'll still be together, no worries, but it's virtual. The State of the City presentation will highlight some truly remarkable achievements, which have been made in spite of the challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic and the state of emergency, which we are still experiencing. I want to especially recognize the hard work, creative work of our Public Information Officer Jonathan Foo and Executive Assistant Nancy Ramos in assisting with this year's presentation. So Jonathan, and Jonathan, I believe it is, let's start the presentation. I think there's a little delay. Oh, here we go.
Welcome and thank you for joining us for our annual State of the City address. I'm Denise Manchaca, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel. Without a doubt, this past year has been a significant challenge. In just a short time, our community experienced unprecedented hardship and change. Some have even faced a profound loss. Despite these challenges, we still managed to rally together to bring food, masks, shields, and other crucial resources to our elderly, first responders, and families in need. We found unique ways to adapt, be resilient, and stay connected while staying safe at home at the recommendation of our public health professionals. We've provided grants to our businesses, relief to renters, and funding for our senior meals. We've created the Here Commission to help ensure the safety and representation of our diverse communities, setting a blueprint for neighboring cities to follow. As we continue to progress into the new year, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the preceding year, to reflect on our challenges and our changes. More importantly, I'd like to take time to focus on the power of resilience as we navigate it through a challenging year. Before we get started, I'd like to take some time to recognize my colleagues on the City Council, including Vice Mayor Chin Ho Lao, Councilmember Tony Ding, Councilmember John Harrington, and Councilmember Jason Pooh. As a City Council, we collectively focused our attention at navigating through this difficult year. I'd like to personally thank them for their hard work and dedication throughout this time. Now, please join me as we take a look back at 2020 in this year's State of the City address. We started 2020 with the goal of improving our city's financial health. To do this, we, as a City Council, fundamentally changed how our city's budgeting process works. Working closely with everyone at the city, we were able to pass several fundamental policy changes designed to improve transparency and to promote accountability, allowing us to chart a prudent financial path moving forward. These efforts have already made an impact on our city's financial health, allowing us to generate an operating surplus in the past year with a projected surplus for our ongoing fiscal year. These operating surpluses were achieved with a status quo budget with a focus on reducing costs whenever possible. This includes finding ways to take services in-house to reduce costs, reevaluating our contracts with our partners using a new citywide contract management system, maintaining strict staffing levels, and finding new sources of funding to support our services. To talk more about our efforts to address our budget, I would like to introduce Mark Lazzaretto, our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, the city of San Gabriel has not been in a good budget situation over the past few years. But I'm proud to say that with the hard work of the City Council, the San Gabriel City team, and the community, we have made great strides in fixing those situations. Our budget situation is still in a negative fund balance, but it's about half of what it was a few years ago. That has been accomplished through the hard work and efforts of all of the members of the San Gabriel team as we have cut our expenditures everywhere possible. And we have also worked with the community who put their trust in us by adopting Measure SG. Measure SG is going to help us in the future to invest more into our city streets and infrastructure. It's going to help us build more projects, and it's going to help us invest in our team, which is one of our most important assets. But the work that we have done, which I'm proud to have been a part of, was to turn our budget around. And for the past three years, we will have ended our budget year with a slight surplus. Again, we have a lot of work to do, but I'm excited and optimistic about 2021 and what the future brings.
These operating surpluses have allowed us to reduce our general fund deficit from $2.6 million in the 2017-2018 fiscal year to our projected $1.34 million in our most recent fiscal year. As you can tell, there's still much more work to be done, but this recent progress means our policies are working. To ensure that our essential services remain uninterrupted in the immediate future, we also asked our community to take a close look at a 0.75% sales tax measure to help fund important city services. This sales tax measure, known as Measure SG, was designed to protect our most critical services, including public safety, recreation programs, and public infrastructure improvements. While Measure SG was designed to fund these services with the goal of expanding their scope in the future, the sales tax measure has instead allowed us to maintain our current services in the midst of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. While other cities have been forced to reduce services as a result of the dramatic drop in sales tax revenue, we have been able to use funding from Measure SG as a stopgap to prevent any significant cuts or reductions. As we addressed our city's budget, we would later experience one of the worst pandemics our country has faced in over a century. Not limited to a single country or region, COVID-19 would soon have a profound impact on our lives and on society. As we learned about COVID-19, we asked our community to make sacrifices by avoiding gatherings and to practice good personal hygiene. We then asked our community to mask up and for a period to stay safer at home while we attempted to slow the spread of COVID-19. The results of these sacrifices have been immediate and far-reaching. While these actions have saved and continue to save lives, they've also impacted our community socially and economically. As a result, we've harnessed the resources of our city to focus on three key areas during the pandemic: service, relief, and health. Let's first focus on service. In order to continue our most essential services, many city programs were modified to accommodate our new normal. In an effort to still serve our community, our front counters began offering service online and via telephone alongside limited in-person appointments and drop boxes at City Hall. To talk more about these service changes, I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director and Assistant City Manager Arminé Sheperian to talk about our most recent changes and how we've learned to adapt to changing norms.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment and tell you all about all the changes we've made. When the pandemic hit, it really was an overnight change for community development. From looking at ways to offer plan check services for building, planning, and any submittals that residents wanted to do, it was something we had to do very quickly. What we ended up doing is offering ways that all residents can do their plan submittals online, which means that staff is looking at multiple emails, responding to the submittals, and doing all the back and forth that we would typically do at the counter, but doing it virtually. We have offered for residents to meet with us using various tools, including FaceTime. We've offered for residents to do drop-offs at City Hall. And we've also delegated a spot in the parking lot of City Hall where we do drive-through, drop-offs, and pickups. In addition, we've offered to do virtual inspections of properties along with making ourselves available to do a lot of phone calls, emails. We set up a line specifically to take intake from residents and an email. In addition, offering these tools, we've offered to do all of these things in different languages, and it's worked. Sometimes it is more work because certain tools are not as easy to navigate for residents who have never had to use them before, but we're always willing to take the time to work with the residents, with the applicants, walk them through it. We're offering our services in any which way we possibly can because we want to be business-friendly, we want to work with our businesses on the economic development side of things. We immediately created ways for all of our businesses to reach us through one line, offered ways for them to call staff directly. And I'd like to think that by doing all these things, we are literally making ourselves available at all times to our residents.
While some city programs were impacted, other city services continued with minimal interruption. During the pandemic, our Public Works Department was able to perform important infrastructure improvements to our community while still practicing health guidelines to keep everyone safe. Even in the midst of a pandemic, our team was able to provide a variety of payment treatments, including full replacement to surface coatings to over 12 miles of city streets with a budget of $2.5 million over the last fiscal year. The team also performed important maintenance and rehabilitation work on our local signage, facilities, and parks. To talk about the improvements our Public Works Department has made this year, I'd like to introduce our Public Works Director and City Engineer Greg Devink.
Thank you, Mayor. The world pandemic has certainly affected all government operations, but Public Works provides many essential services that simply cannot stop despite the impacts of the virus. One section of Public Works responsibilities is our capital investment in our streets. It's not a big secret that a lot of our streets have degraded to poor condition. They have been underfunded for a very long time. In today's dollars, replacing a mile of street is now past $1 million. You can pretty easily see that we simply cannot afford to replace all the streets that have degraded. We've changed our philosophy of depending so much on consultants, and we are designing our street programs in-house instead of contracting out consultants. Separate from that, we're thinking of how do we get a hold of our problem? To put it simply, every year, we would fix one or two miles of streets by fully replacing them and making them really great new streets. But in that time where we fix a mile or two, let's say three to five miles have now degraded to be the worst condition or low rankings. Moving forward, we're trying to get a hold of slowing the degradation and fixing things more cost-effectively. We've recently, this year, done a project that's called ARAM, where we put hot asphalt, a thin layer, a layer of aggregate, and then slurry coating on top of that. That's appropriate for our medium-conditioned streets, even the good-conditioned streets that are just starting to show signs of cracking. And what the ARAM process does at a much more affordable price than replacing it is it adds about 15 years of life to a street. If we get our medium streets to stop degrading to be the worst condition where we can no longer afford to fix them, we can get ahead of the problem. And this coming summer, probably late summer, we should do a very significant project, probably one of the most impactful improvements to our streets the city may have ever done. I'm very excited about it. But it's not full remove and replace that we can't afford, but we will be grinding two inches off the edges of the streets of the gutter, doing an ARAM layer which simulates approximately two inches, and then paving back a rubber cap layer over the street. And we're going to try and do as many miles as we can. We work backwards from the available dollars, so we're soliciting every grant fund we can possibly get our hands on towards streets and work backwards. Then we pick the process we want, then we decide how many miles we can afford, and then we go out and do as much as we can. So this coming summer, I'm very excited to have a very big impact on our streets.
This continuation of our services also applies to our city's creativity at finding new sources of funding and continuing important events and programs in the midst of an ongoing pandemic. As a testament to the work of our team, I'm currently at Roosevelt Elementary School at a new playground funded by Kaboom and Blue Shield of California and organized by our Community Services Department. Throughout 2020 and into 2021, our Community Services Department has been instrumental in addressing our physical and emotional well-being by modifying their events and programs. Signature events like our San Gabriel Lunar New Year Festival and our annual tree lighting ceremony were able to continue virtually alongside programs for our youngest residents. To talk about the challenges associated with bringing these events virtually, I'd like to introduce Lucy, our Community Services Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Manchaca. Resilience can help us get through and overcome barriers and hardships, but resilience is not something we're born with, and it's built over time. And that is exactly what the Community Services staff has done this past year, is being resilient. During the pandemic, the Community Services Department staff quickly adapted and implemented body fight programming to continuously keep our community engaged through the following events: Fourth of July Celebration, Driving Concerts and Movies, Drive Through Trump or Treat Event, Virtual Costume Contest, Virtual Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony, Drive Through Dia de los Portos Concert and Community Events, Virtual After-School Programming, Virtual Lunar New Year Celebration, just to name a few. Some of the challenges that we overcame was adopting county guidelines and regulations and keeping up with the ever-changing protocols and making our events safe for everyone. Some of the successes associated with our resiliency included a continuity in regular programs, exploring different experiences, and keeping the community engaged. We wanted to provide a sense of normalcy in our community, which we firmly believe we achieved.
Finally, despite the pandemic, we were also able to expand selected services online. In the past year, the San Gabriel Police Department has dramatically expanded their online presence through social media, creating a new Public Information Bureau that oversees accounts in Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. Combine these initiatives will help improve transparency and allow the public to get a behind-the-scenes glimpse of San Gabriel's finest. To talk more about the new Public Information Bureau, I'd like to introduce Chief Jean Harris and Sergeant Rebecca Gomez of the San Gabriel Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. During this challenging time over 2020, the past several months, we found it necessary to really determine how we, as a police department, could really produce some service enhancement components so that we could reach out to members of the community and still provide that knock-your-socks-off service. One of those elements, as an example, was 411 with the chief, where we actually had to make some changes so that we could provide that service virtually in order to answer questions that community members might have. And although it was challenging to get it done, our press folks, both on the city side and on the police department's side, were able to get it working so that we could continue to provide that service and answer questions through seamless connectivity. At some point, we're going to get back to face-to-face meetings because we consider that important, but we also considered it to be very important that we continued that service even during the challenging time where we had to meet virtually. One other offspring of that would be the Press Information Bureau. It was born as a result of us evaluating our abilities to provide communication services through many different media platforms. So we needed to create a piece of our organization that was specifically designed to engage in press or media relations. So we created the Press Information Bureau to augment the city's press information officer and their apparatus, and it has been seamless and very effective over the past several months.
I'm Sergeant Gomez with the San Gabriel Police Department. I'm part of the Public Information Bureau, and the creation of the Public Information Bureau has significantly increased our reach online through social media and in a more innovative and customer-centric way. The Public Information Bureau, or the PIB as we like to call it, is the San Gabriel Police Department's media and social media team. We operate under the direction of the city's Public Information Office as part of a larger citywide group. There's a great synergy now amongst the various city departments when it comes to public outreach, and the Public Information Bureau is a testament to that. What I appreciate and what I think the public will appreciate about this new group is how it improves communication with our community as well as transparency and accountability here in our police department to our community. The PIB's creation and expansion during the pandemic is a testament to the city's commitment to improving public safety services and outreach throughout an otherwise difficult year. The PIB includes members of the police department who volunteered to participate in addition to conducting their regular assignments, such as myself. It has been a bright spot, as I said, in an otherwise difficult year because we've been able to engage with our community even if we haven't been able to do so face-to-face through 411 with the chief or through the other various in-person events that we used to be able to have. We look forward to continuing to expand our reach and improve services online. The San Gabriel community can continue to engage with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
While our city worked diligently to provide new and existing services without disruption, our teams worked hard to provide relief to individuals and businesses who've been impacted by COVID-19. Our response to the pandemic has been immediate and far-reaching with policies and programs designed to address the pandemic's impact on housing, food, and local businesses. For those who are renting, we provided a housing relief program that distributed one-time grants of $1,000 to up to 66 eligible San Gabriel residents who have been financially impacted by COVID-19. To serve our older residents, our Community Services Department expanded our senior meal program to provide delivery and drive-through distribution for senior meals. As a result of COVID-19 and the effort of our team, we were able to expand the reach of this program from 30 seniors served per week to over 200 seniors per week. To talk more about the important program, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Perez, our Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Services Department offers a senior nutrition program to provide supplemental meals to seniors in our community. This program is typically held in-person at our Adult Recreation Center and in conjunction with YWCA provides meals for 30 to 40 seniors each day. With the onset of the pandemic and the safer-at-home order, this program shifted to provide delivery of meals to seniors. The need for meals expanded during the pandemic, and the program grew from serving 30 to 40 seniors to serving over 200. The City Council authorized use of federal and CARES Act funds to help cover the cost of the meals and the staffing for this program. Without the additional funding, this program would not have been possible. In July, the program shifted again to offer a drive-through distribution of meals, which is still happening currently. Each week, seniors drive through the Mission Playhouse parking lot, and staff places meals for the week in their vehicle. For seniors who may not drive or have transportation challenges, staff is able to help provide delivery of the meals. During the pandemic, we have also initiated partnerships with businesses and community organizations. Bon Chon Chicken provided meals for our seniors, and throughout the pandemic, the mosque of San Gabriel has provided fresh meals, produce, and non-perishable food items for our seniors. Additionally, we have been able to provide masks, hand sanitizer, and other PPE. This has been a great opportunity to bring the community together to serve this vulnerable population.
To address the economic impact of COVID-19, we created a new 10-point plan back in July 2020 to provide assistance and relief to our local businesses. The comprehensive plan provided a framework for new ways of commerce, introduced a temporary outdoor business permit program, and provided marking materials to help navigate through this new normal. To talk more about this plan, I'd like to introduce Dominika from our Economic Development Division.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of San Gabriel's 10-point plan for recovery, resiliency, and reinvestment has really been our response to the pandemic. And it started off as reimagining when the pandemic started and we had very limited information during a time that we thought it was going to be a temporary impact to the community. We took that moment to look internal to our processes and to our offerings to the community and say, what can we improve? What can we help facilitate during this time? Under the 10-point plan, we have introduced a temporary outdoor business program permit, which helps businesses stay flexible and pivot to be able to stay open during various levels of restrictions and closures. We have facilitated virtual meetings with businesses. While we can't necessarily go out into the community as much as we'd like to have in-person business visits, we're still very accessible despite City Hall being closed to the public. We want to make sure that everyone is safely socially distancing but that there is no lapse of service being experienced. Through the grant program, we received funding through CARES Act, through the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and we were able to facilitate small business grant loans as well as housing relief. We continue to provide service to the community with no laps in service experienced. And we will continue doing that through the pandemic. We're thankful to our business community for their resilience and their contributions to the community and all of the care that they've taken to make sure that they, their employees and their clients and customers in town are safe through this. And the Economic Development Team stands by, ready to assist.
Finally, our COVID-19 response also focused on the health of our community. Our most immediate concern involved testing, specifically how we could organize COVID-19 testing centers that were local and accessible to all members of our community. As COVID-19 centers were introduced throughout the state, we partnered with the Harold Christian Health Center to bring a local testing site to San Gabriel. Back in June, we helped the Harold Christian Health Center launch a new testing location for all asymptomatic essential workers and those exhibiting symptoms to both San Gabriel residents and those in our region. The center offered free tests and did not require health insurance or immigration status to qualify. Here's Fire Captain and Public Information Officer Antonio Negrete to talk more about this important partnership.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as we all know, 2020 was a pretty crazy year here in the city of San Gabriel. As a San Gabriel Fire Department, we're always looking for ways where we can reach out and assist our community. It's one of the points of our mission that we have as the Fire Department. And when the Harold Christian Center reached out for us and asked us to partner up with them to get this message out to the community, we immediately jumped on it. We thought it was a great opportunity to be able to reach our citizens. San Gabriel Christian Center gave the opportunity for people to get a peace of mind whether they had a positive test where they could immediately see treatment from their physician or give them a peace of mind if they had a negative test. Now let's keep in mind that these tests were free. And regardless of immigration status or type of insurance that you had, people were able to go to Harold Christian Center and receive a free test. And one other bonus is that the Harold Christian Center was, at that time, the only multilingual center that had opened up in the San Gabriel Valley. And you know, as we all know, we have a lot of people in our community who would feel safe in that location. And we were very happy to partner up with them in this venue.
To expand our testing capacity, we then partnered with Core to offer a mobile testing location at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse at the beginning of this year in response to the recent surge. Working with the help of Los Angeles County, Core provided thousands of free COVID-19 tests that were free, pain free and family friendly. For a year that made us reevaluate our budget and address a worldwide pandemic, 2020 also forced us to confront inequality. The death of George Floyd and the nationwide protests that followed made us think about our role in promoting equity and eliminating structures that perpetuate inequality. With the support of the City Council, we were able to pass a resolution that reaffirmed our support for fair, even and equal administration and enforcement of its laws. We then committed ourselves to an ongoing process of self reflection, examination, active listening and engagement with our community to review our policies and practices. To do this, we had several virtual meetings with local community leaders, religious groups and community organizations to listen to their stories and to understand how we as a city may improve. After extensive feedback, the City Council moved quickly to establish a new commission dedicated to equity, access, diversity, social justice and respect for everyone in our community. The new committee, known as Human Equity Access and Relations Commission, or the HIER Commission, serves as an advisory board to the City Council by reviewing city policies, laws, practices and procedures to address inequality, inequity and injustice in San Gabriel. With seven members representing a diverse membership, this committee will have access to city data, information and materials to recommend policy changes to advance for equity and access for everyone in our community. Now, I'd like to introduce three of our seven newly appointed commissioners from the HIER Commission to have them talk about the importance of this new commission in their own words.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the founding of the HIER Commission was important because after the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis, the leaders of our city were made aware that the residents of San Gabriel were concerned about ensuring equity in city policies. Having this commission means that the city is listening to the concerns of its residents and desires that people, all people, are able to have access to the resources they need and a voice in this community.
Thank you, Mayor. Every person and every organization has room for growth and improvement. The HIER Commission is another tool that our city leaders can use to improve the lives of San Gabriel residents. As a commissioner, one of our goals is to make sure that every resident in San Gabriel feels that they have access to the city's resources and leaders and are given an opportunity to participate in local decisions. Equity, access and inclusion are necessary for successful governing.
With racial tensions at an all time high, it was crucial for our city to swiftly establish a HIER Commission. This commission aims to tackle issues such as social injustice and plans to promote diversity and inclusion within our city. I've joined this commission to listen to the people, work for the people and to ensure that everyone is treated equally. Violence against our Asian community is unacceptable and we will not put up with this in our city. If you see something, speak up, say something and be that voice for the voiceless.
As we conclude our look at 2020, there are still several challenges ahead that we must confront. First, our primary goal is to improve access to COVID-19 vaccinations in the coming weeks and months ahead. While we have access to local testing centers, we'll be working closely with our county, state and federal partners to improve access to vaccinations, including closer vaccination sites that are more accessible for our residents. Second, we'll be continuing to implement our Economic Development 10 point plan to provide economic support and relief to our residents and our businesses. Our business community serves as an important bedrock for our community. And when they prosper, we prosper. We'll be working diligently to provide as much support as we can as we move into 2021. Finally, as we continue to vaccinate a larger segment of our community, we must adopt to the new normal for the next several months as we recover from COVID-19. Although this year has been difficult for all of us, I remain committed to providing strong leadership as mayor for the city of San Gabriel. When I first began my term, I was eager to provide representation as the first Latina mayor and work creatively for San Gabriel's diverse, talented and hardworking community. However, 2020 turned out to be a much larger challenge than we had all anticipated and forcing us to rethink how cities operate during this social, economic and health crisis. I have been honored to serve the community throughout this pandemic. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your passion and input, involvement, support and collaboration. There's no denying that we still have much work to do during and after we pull through this historic period. I am committed to further working and building back this great community alongside my federal council members and with the help of city staff and the members of our community. Thank you for watching the State of the City address. Stay healthy, stay safe, San Gabriel.
Well, thank you, everyone. Round of applause to everybody. It was a real community effort. I thank the staff who stepped up to do the video. I know on the screen it looked a little choppy, but it will be on our YouTube. The full video will be on our YouTube channel and I can assure you it's flawless. Jonathan and his team did a really good job. So I'll just open it up to council. I don't know if there's any comments you may have, but I think it was a long process. But I think it was important to share individually from the individual staff what was done this year and how we've had to pivot. I think that was our mantra this year is pivoting at every moment. So if there isn't any comments from council, we will now move to the next item. I guess I'll move. The next item, oh, I'm sorry, Sharon, go ahead.
Proclamation recognizing March 2021 as Women's History Month. Mayor Manchaca will make the presentation.
Okay, there we go. So I have asked for this to be put on the agenda and also council member Poo made that same request. Just to kind of give you some background, in 1987, Congress proclaimed March as Women's History Month. Every year since then, Americans take this month as a time to reflect and pay tribute to all the remarkable women who've contributed to our nation. And we have quite a few in this organization that I'm looking at right now. It is especially important to recognize women this year as they continue to persevere through this pandemic. We know that women have been disproportionately affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and are bearing the heaviest burdens of the health and economic crisis. This proclamation, which is on the screen, proclaims March 2021 as Women's History Month in the city of San Gabriel and invites everyone to recognize this month as a celebration of all the contributions made by women through their collective and individual strengths as they continue to serve as the backbones of our communities, as advocates, activists, entrepreneurs, caretakers and leaders. In the words of Vice President Harris, "When you lift up women, you lift up family, you lift up communities, you lift up economies and you lift up..." So with that, the proclamation is on the screen and hopefully will be on our social media, the full proclamation. And are there any comments from council? Okay, oh, council member Poo.
I just, well, you know, we didn't have much of an opportunity and we'll obviously all make comments during council comments later, but I just want to say great job with the State of the City to you and all the staff. And I'm also just very pleased that we're able to recognize, you know, Women's History Month as well as Black History Month last month. And I think this is the start of a really good tradition for the city of San Gabriel to set an example of this sort of vibrant, inclusive and diverse city that we are. So thanks very much for all these efforts.
Thank you, Councilmember Poo. Any other council comments? Great, then next item, please.
COVID-19 briefing. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace and Police Chief Harris.
Okay, Fire Chief Wallace, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor Leal, members of council and citizens of San Gabriel. I'm Steve Wallace, party for the city of San Gabriel, and I have a brief update on COVID operations of the Fire Department tonight. We have a generally optimistic view of what's going on in the news we've been getting lately. As you know, on Monday, the 15th, the county moved into the red tier, which is very significant. We beat several other counties into that tier and it's been a long time coming. Our seven day test positivity rate has dropped below 2%. We're now at 1.9%, which has not been that low since early November. And there were only 318 new cases reported today, which is the lowest number of new cases reported since November. 865 people are hospitalized across Los Angeles County with COVID, which if you remember, just two months ago, we were well over 8,000. So we've had a significant drop in the number of cases that are requiring hospitalization. Our rate of spread is the numbers dropped below one. We know at one that one case spreads to at least one person and we are at point eight. Within the city of San Gabriel, we have a total of 3,166 cases. And sadly, 193 of our residents have died. If there's anything good in that, it's been nearly 10 days since we've reported a death in the city. So it's good news in our city. A new statistic I have to report for you tonight is vaccinations. 8,579 San Gabriel residents have been vaccinated, which is roughly 21% of our population. A feather in our cap there because the county average is about 19% of the population. So we're trending a little bit above Los Angeles County's overall vaccination rate. Our skilled nursing facilities continue to be robust and strong. And if the metrics hold where we are, there's a good potential that we may move to the orange tier, which is one less of the moderate tier in early April. Fire department responses are at pre pandemic levels. We're averaging 12 to 15 runs a day with a variety of calls. Happily, all of our staff is COVID free and at work. And our PPC stocks and medication stocks are very, very robust. As part of the fire department reopening, we're back in the field conducting in person apartment house and law business life safety inspections, which is the first since last summer. Along through the pandemic, we've initiated a few behavioral health and wellness initiatives. And as part of that, I'll be speaking to the San Gabriel Valley and Los Angeles County Psychologists Association this weekend. And I'm presenting on mental health impacts and needs of first responders in the community. They've taken a great interest and are looking at putting in some days of service to come into fire stations and provide counseling and sort of an outlet for our folks to just decompress and let go of some of what we've experienced over the past few months. Within the Fire Department, we implemented two new programs for San Gabriel firefighters. And the first one's called Fire Strong, which is a website accessible 24/7 on an anonymous basis. It's designed to be a point of reference for fire service members and their families. We know it's difficult in good times to reach out for assistance and we find through an anonymous resource with peer counselors, we're able to find assessments for chemical dependency, anxiety, distress, depression and PTSD. That's really trusted. The second thing we've done and we're just about to launch is a partnership with Counseling Team International, which will be able to provide acute mental health and behavioral wellness interventions as well as care for our first responders and families. In addition, they're going to be able to provide us critical instance stress debriefing resources, which is something absolutely new for our department and needed. And they'll be training firefighters in peer support. So we'll have an immediate resource within the fire stations if we have a member experiencing any sort of crisis. We're doing both of these in an effort to boost the resiliency of our public safety members. And just another reminder, everybody keep doing what you're doing. You see the numbers are dropping. Keep your masking when appropriate. Keep your spacing. Keep your guard up and we'll get through this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Wallace. Chief Harris? Your mic is not on, Chief Harris. It looks like it's on, but we can't hear you. He's also doing the next presentation, so we're kind of on hold here. I think he's going to be trying to call in. Is that him? Should we maybe move towards... Perfect, perfect. Okay, you're on, Chief.
All right. Sorry about that. Some technical difficulties, but thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council and to the members of the community. Good evening. Before I start my very brief COVID presentation, I would really like to send out some kudos to the members of the city staff for all that we've tried to do under these very harsh circumstances over the last year. Everybody has stood tall and though we're not out of the woods, there's a lot of kudos to be thrown around and I want to make sure that I present that to my team. You guys are awesome. I, in particular, that Fire Department Fire Chief for the work that he and his folks have done and having to voluntarily go out and put themselves in positions where every day they're having to bear the risk of COVID-19 and do all that they do and getting up close and personal with the unknowns that came along with that. They have the utmost of my admiration. So thank you for that, Steve, and you and your crew. It's a pleasure working with you guys and the rest of the city team as well. From a COVID perspective, the police department is still working at 100% of capacity. From a COVID perspective, the police department is still working at 100% of capacity. Our service delivery is unfettered. We have no persons that are currently experiencing any symptoms or exposures with regard to the, the internal personnel. We are out there conducting the service, all of the services to members of this community. And with that, I'd like to thank the members of this community for all that you've done in getting us through to this point. And again, though we're not out of the woods, you folks who have really adhered to the voluntary compliance requests that we put out and, and really the see something, say something rules have helped us get to this point over this arduous time in our, in our city's history. So again, thank you for that. I want to commend you all because it, it is because of you that we were able to get through it with, with the, the low amount of issues that, that we had in comparison to some of the other jurisdictions. And that is a very, very good thing for the inner workings of our city. So thank you as well. Our PPE stocks are still high, thanks to the donations of members of the community. And we are continuing to put the message out to our folks internally that we are still going to follow any and all of the rules that are put out there and certainly adhere to the social distancing requirements and making sure that we can continue this, this good trend that we're experiencing and, and kind of reducing some of the problems that we're having with COVID-19. We are also order our folks at every interaction in the community to remind members of the community, as I will here, that we want to continue to move in that direction and still adhere to the rules. Don't let your guard down, as the fire chief said. Let's get to the point where we can enjoy the upcoming spring and following summer. Get through this thing with continuously reducing numbers and we should be okay. So again, thank you all. Thanks to the members of this team and that is my briefing for the day.
Great, thank you, chief. Counsel, are there any questions? Chief Wallace or Chief Harris?
Madam Mayor, I have questions.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Hey, Chief Wallace, I, I want to thank you. I should call you Dr. Wallace nowadays. You know so much about this pandemic. But anyway, I attend the National League of Cities Conference and the, one of the very important workshop is called the Vaccine Book Camp. So we had the Dr. Fauci came to speak to us and also CDC staff. So one of the question that brought up by many of us, you know, I asked Dr. Fauci and say, well, there's a long-term side effect from all these vaccines. And according to his answer is, you know, no. Because, yeah, I, I, I don't know. He said, you know, immunity, most vaccines only last 60 states, 60 days. So, yeah, there won't be any long-term side effect. And also I asked a question about the lymph nodes swollen, you know, after the vaccine. The CDC staff says, yeah, it, it happens, but very rare. Maybe, you know, just maybe a couple cases. So there should be no concern about that. But I, I agree, you know, because I have this friend, 85 years old, a breast cancer patient. She was worried that, you know, she take the vaccine or not, but she took them. And as a matter of fact, she's fine. So there is no concern regarding that. Now, I think the hero is doing the vaccines for all the supermarkets workers, but also restaurant workers. And now they're using the Johnson, Johnson vaccine. So this new, and good thing is one shot. Well, again, you know, because anything new, we always have a question. So do you know anything about this new kind of vaccine? And that's number one. And number two, because they already contact all the major supermarkets, but in the major restaurants owners. So they notify their workers and to register. But however, we have 200 restaurants and most of them are very small. So I don't know if we can reach out to everyone, maybe using the business license and send notice and say, hey, you know, just call the hero vaccine hotline and see if they can register and to, to take care of that. So those are the questions for, for Chief Wallace.
All right, thank, thank you for your questions, Vice Mayor. It's a good question with the Johnson and Johnson sense. It's so new. At least it's, it's the newest of the three vaccines that are approved for use in the United States. The most common side effects are very, very similar to what we're seeing with some of the other ones. Some pain at the injection site, muscle ache, fatigue and nausea. Most of the people that have experienced this are experiencing with one or, within one or two days and it's gone within 36 hours. You want to remember again that the Johnson and Johnson is the one shot, the one and done. So there isn't a second shot like Moderna where people are typically experiencing more of the adverse effects. You do bring up a good point with your, your breast cancer friend that women have experienced swollen lymph nodes. I actually do have one friend of mine that experienced a swollen lymph node in her armpit following the injection. She's monitoring it and I think like most doctors are going to say, if you see something unusual, to get it checked out. But other, other than that, there's, there should be no real concern. Then in regard to your second question with contacting our restaurants, we can reach out through all of our social media in the fire department. And I also believe that my partners in the community development department, as well as the finance department with the business license section, may be able to offer some resources as well to get the word out. I think if we do that in partnership with the Herald Christian Center, we should be able to reach out and touch a lot of the restaurants in town. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. The only thing that I want to, you know, say, this is from CDC staff. Yeah, even if you found there's a swollen lymph node, don't take any x-ray right away. It's the 30 days after, you know, this swollen subsides. And then you see your doctor and get mammograms or any other tests. And so as a matter of fact, the CDC will notify all the radiologists in the nation and say, hey, check with your patients. See if they took the vaccines within 30 days. So it's, it, it's okay, but just wait 30 days. So that, that's a thing. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I have a question for Chief Harris. You know, Asian communities being this scapegoat, you know, because all these sayings about the virus is coming from Asian country and we brought this terrible disease or whatever the plaque. But anyway, we're seeing so many hate crimes throughout the nation. And, you know, one of our community group that they, they, they want to say, well, you know, we're a part of a San Gabriel community. We want to do this native watch, patrolling team. Okay, so all volunteers. They want to drive through our many as a business corridors. And so it's a volunteer group. And we're asking our chief Harris to come to our meeting March 25th at the Smith Park at 3 o'clock. And so we want to know, you know, how can we protect ourselves, but also protect our community, especially the business communities?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that the first part of that effort is just to make sure that people are involved. So it is really good to hear that there's a group of folks who want to get involved in protecting their community and be active in, you know, getting out and passing on that message of see something, say something. That's extremely important. All members of our community are invited to do that on a regular basis. We talk about that at many of our department functions. Certainly, our city community engagement apparatus is constantly preaching for people to get engaged, to be able to communicate and that we are open to that. This volunteer effort will certainly move a mile in that direction. We are open to having volunteers come in and work with us in, in getting things done. As long as we can work within the confines of, of any legal requirements, the more the merrier. And so it is a good thing that you're, that you're coordinating and we look forward to working with that group and providing for the safety of these community members.
Thank you. I really appreciate your help. And, and so we're looking forward to this meeting of March 25th. That's a Thursday, 3 o'clock at the Smith Park. And of course, everyone is invited. So, yeah.
Vice Mayor, I just want to remind you, March 25th from 5 to 7 is the annual block captain's workshop. It's a drive. So, yeah, so you have 3 o'clock and you have 5 o'clock, but if any.
Take that long.
Okay, well, just in case. You know, I'm not sure if any of the volunteers are block captains too. So hopefully they're able to, yeah, both, if they are block captains, but just a reminder.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
No, no, actually, I do appreciate both chiefs that have been working so hard to keep our community safe. So, yeah, I'm taking this opportunity to thank them.
Okay, are there any other questions from council? I see now, then we'll go to the next item. Sharon?
Asian Crime Victims Working Group. Police Chief Harris will make the presentation.
Thank you. This presentation is, is a circumstance that makes me very proud to announce our participation. The members of the San Gabriel Police Department are participating in a San Gabriel Valley-wide effort at addressing the numerous reports that have come about with regard to Asian victimization. The name of the group is Asian Crime Victims Work Group. Each of the San Gabriel Valley Police Departments will have a representative that participates. But the, the good thing for us, and I'm very proud of this, is that our very own Captain Nakamura will be the person heading this group and really going out and representing our city well and trying to address all of the issues that come with this, with this problem. This group has been designed to go out and ensure that we're communicating with members of the community and letting them know that we want to rid the community of, of fear and intrepidation with regard to the threats that may come as a result of some of the, the issues that the vice mayor spoke of. The San Gabriel Valley Chiefs have come together to make sure that we are addressing the various problems that impact the individual agencies, but as a collective, all of San Gabriel Valley. And so it's a robust group with one active representative from each agency and several.
Our chief is frozen.
Collateral representatives that are also going to be participating and reaching out to community. We're also communities so that we can kind of. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So that we can pull ideas from the folks that are being impacted in our community. Clearly, clearly the police department is not the sole idea factory. We are going to be the ones facilitating some of this, but we are going to be reaching out to the community to get their ideas on how to protect all those members of the San Gabriel Valley. And again, it's one of our very own that's going to be leading this. So I'll be able to report back regularly to the council and to members of the community. I think this is the first step in recognizing a lot of what the here commission has been established to facilitate. We're very proud of that. We think this is going to really lead us down the road of, of addressing a lot of the community needs in this regard. So we're very proud of that. It should be known that we did a, an analysis, a statistical analysis of crimes within the city of San Gabriel. And there was some very good news for us in that we compared, did a comparative analysis of Asian victimization in both 2019 and 2020. And we showed that we had a significant reduction in victimization for that particular demographic. What I want to put out to folks is that because this is the Asian Crime Victims Work Group, does not mean we're prioritizing one ethnic group over another. That is not the purpose. What this group is designed to do is to deal with a very specific set of, of circumstances that have been reported in the media and with other groups that require attention so that we can determine what action needs to be taken. There should be no mistake that we are addressing all victimization within our city and our area and will continue to do so as an active member of law enforcement. The other analysis that we did was a, an analysis of part one crimes, violent crimes. And we found that we had very similar results, significant reduction from the year 2019 and into 2020. We did not do the detailed deep dive to determine what created a lesson one year or another. That is something we will do and how COVID may have impacted this or not. But we are on pace this year in 2021 to meet the 2020 numbers, which would be a very, a significant win for the members of this community. I will regularly put out information with regard to this group and with regard to our findings. And certainly conduct some more in-depth analysis to ensure we're giving out the proper information. So with that, again, I want to thank the members of this group and all the other cities that are involved. Certainly our captain, who's going to be the, the lead on this thing and taking that lead voluntarily, stepping up to really represent what we are about. And we're going to make this work and ensure that we are really taking notice of what it is that's impacting this segment of our community and we'll do everything we can do to stop out any fear of crime in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I was just going to say, well, first of all, I applaud, oh, I'll finish and then I'll turn it over to, to applaud Captain Nakamura for taking this on and, and perhaps if he has time, maybe to go to the group that Vice Mayor mentioned. That might be a good way to do some outreach and get some feedback. You know, my greatest concern with this, this rise in API crimes is the fact that even though our city is, might be showing incidents going down, I think there's a real issue with reporting. You know, we just don't know how to report or afraid to report. And so I'm hoping this group could really look at that, somehow communicate all the ways it can do the reporting. It could be by phone. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be in writing, you know, take videos, take pictures. But I'm hoping we can find ways so we at least let them, let our API groups know that there are many, many ways of, of doing this and, and letting others know when they are victims. But.
That is the foundation of the group, Madam Mayor. That is what, what the mission will be. It will be more about information and community coalescing than it is about enforcement. We have plenty of people and groups enforcing the laws and going out and engaging, looking for, for offenders and protecting victims. This group will be designed to communicate, again, rid, rid the community of fear and reporting, ensuring that they have no issue with reporting it to whomever the local agency is and making sure that we're reaching out to both small and large groups, residents, businesses, anybody who can offer any information or help and making sure that we, we address this issue. So that is the foundation piece of the group and we want to make sure to remind everybody, see something, say something. We want people to report, even if we have to go out and, and, and reach out to the folks during the outreach. The other part of it is it can all be anonymous. Nobody has to give their name. It is irrespective of, of, of status. We want everyone to report and there's no fear of retribution. It's very important so in protection of our community.
And they're also, I think it was last week that the LA County Supervisors approved additional funding for this effort because there is a significant rise in this particular group that's taking place right now. So I'm not sure if there's, well, hopefully the group is, is aware, grant opportunities, just opportunities to provide some funding as you, as you continue to do the outreach because it costs money to do that. So, and I see Rebecca Perez, she has her mic on. Did you want to add something or is it just by? Oh, okay, sorry, Rick. It will put you on the spot. I just saw your mic on. I, so let me go to council member Poo first and then council member Bing.
If I can add one more thing, Madam Mayor. We can add one more thing, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I froze. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There's one more element on what the group is going to do and, and the group is going to be designed to go out and put out good information to train folks as to what the difference is between reporting a crime and reporting a hate crime. That's what's, that's what's very important. We need to make sure that everybody understands the difference and this group is going to do that through a bunch of different effective communications medium. But that's very important to understand the difference and we'll make sure that folks out there have the tools to understand and how to report, what to say when they report, what to look for and what questions will be asked of them. But the.
Yeah, you froze on us, chief. But, okay, well, thank you, chief. I'm sorry, you're frozen completely. Let me pass it on to council.
Various dispatch centers are nine.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Pooh.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo your comments and thank the chief and all the members of the SGP D for joining this group. It's definitely something that's very timely and appropriate at this point in time, and let's hope that we continue to have, you know, low incidence of violence and crime directed against our Asian American community. But, you know, as a area that has a majority Asian population, you know, sometimes we we could be targeted by, you know, those who are seeking to do harm to 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 us as Asian American community members. So thank you again, and I echo, you know, your your comments to the community of just being vigilant. You know, I'm telling people, if you see something happening or something's happening to you, take pictures, take video if you can. You know, report it, call nine one one if something is happening in that moment or the the dispatch number that you mentioned, if you want to report something that that, you know, happened previously. And and thank you in the department for taking care of our community members and and keeping us safe in that way. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Chief Harris have the have this Asia crime, the victim, the work group, okay, and our city is leading on that. It's a, yeah, I appreciate you do the good job for our community. And I like your see something, say something, that this idea. And, yeah, and also tomorrow, I don't know if you have chance, but I I will be asking the some our organization, the Chinese community, the owners, they have the, I think, more than twenty organization have the press conference regarding condemning the the Asia crime. And I think your idea, maybe it's a good way to, if you have a chance tomorrow afternoon, we have a virtual, the virtual press conference. Maybe you you can spread out this kind of idea under our Chinese community. I don't know. It's it's okay or not. Yeah.
I think it's an excellent opportunity for Captain Nakamura to get some time doing what it is he does best, and that is communicating this effort out. So I'll make sure that he's made available. If you can get me the information, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, so yeah, tomorrow, maybe tomorrow morning, I I will call you or call call Mark to communicate. Okay, that's because it's time to hurry, the tomorrow afternoon twelve o'clock. Okay.
We are always ready.
Great.
Thank you.
And just going forward, Chief, I'm I'm sure I speak on behalf of the whole council that if there's anything we can do to assist. You know, you don't need to be API to be concerned. Today, it could be API, tomorrow it could be Latinx group. So I know I have an interest. I'm actually attending something tomorrow evening, too. They have a panel of API leaders and hopefully coming out with solutions, too. So if I learn to learn anything, I will definitely pass it on to Captain Nakamura, not you, but the captain, so he can, you know, include that in his toolbox, but I I hope you can count on us as council to, you know, be a sounding board, or if you need us present somewhere, if it has any value. You know, I I think you can count on us, if we can, if we're available, we will be there to to assist our police officers and the captain and his efforts to really protect our our community. So thank you for that. Okay, next item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no public comment this evening.
All right, next item.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. Madam Mayor, we have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Okay, would council, would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see none. Okay, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda? Okay, Vice Mayor has moved, and I'll second. So there's no further discussion. Let's take the vote. Assistant City Clerk.
Councilmember Dean.
Hi.
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Pooh.
Hi.
Councilmember Liao. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Liao, Mayor Manchaca.
Hi.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item is public hearing. We have none. Item six is continuing business. We have none. Next item, new business. Sharon?
Item A, receive and file update on ten-point plan for recovery, resiliency, and reinvestment, and authorize establishment of business assistance fund from existing economic development budget. Economic Development Manager Dominica Megardichan will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, Dominica Megardichan, Economic Development Manager. The item before you is an update on the city's ten-point plan for recovery, resiliency, and reinvestment, and to authorize the establishment of a business assistance fund from existing economic development budget. The ten-point plan is the city's response to the pandemic to help mitigate the financial impacts of the pandemic on our residents and business community. Can I get the assistance of Adam or John to queue up our presentation, please? Thank you. Next slide. The various elements of the plan include a digital media toolkit and templates for businesses to use as they stay open and comply to protocols, a guide to new ways for commerce, and suggestions for our businesses to increase their digital footprint and get creative in providing service to the community, a shop local campaign and marketing our businesses, saving on city fees for any improvements related to COVID nineteen compliance and the plan's programming, expedited city city services and processing. Next slide, please. Implementing best practices, learning and sharing with other agencies and providing relevant services and programming, connecting to financial resources, city hall business concierge services and virtual assistance and facilitation, promoting available retail and development sites, and sharing success stories of the generosity and kind acts experienced in our community. Attachment A provides a chart with updates on all of these elements and any plans to revise or expand on these efforts in twenty twenty one. The elements of the ten-point plan were approved by council in May and June of twenty twenty, and staff hit the ground running with these efforts. As the pandemic and various health and safety protocols and impacts to our residents and businesses have evolved over the last year, so too has this plan. The service to our community continues to be a collaborative effort across all city departments and also leverages the support and resources of our partner agencies, including but not limited to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, San Gabriel Unified School District, our faith-based and nonprofit organizations, the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, the Los Angeles County Development Authority or LACTA, and the Pacific Asian Consortium in Employment or PACE. While city hall remains close to the public since March of twenty twenty to ensure the safety of our residents and employees with social distancing, we have taken steps to ensure no loss or interruption of service, including providing virtual ways of doing business with city hall. A silver lining of the last year is that it helped identify improvements that are here to stay beyond the pandemic. Staff continues to look at internal processes and program offerings, making improvements and ensuring we are assisting in adding value to the community. Next slide. The ten-point plan has not been a static effort, and all programs have been created and implemented by existing city staff with costs absorbed by the departments to maximize the benefit to our community. A number of programs have been created and implemented with a goal of responding to resident and business needs, and we have waived all fees associated with COVID nineteen compliance or a ten-point plan programming. Next slide. The temporary outdoor business program, which was established in July, has facilitated over forty permits and continues to comply with changing protocols. The program will continue to provide outdoor business options. And while indoor dining has reopened in L.A. County this week, we are working to inform our businesses on how to calculate their capacity levels as well as continuing to promote the outdoor dining options while they continue to limit their indoor business space. Next slide. Through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG CARES Act Funding, in June, we established a housing relief program that provided five households with one-time one thousand dollar grants, a small business grant program that provided fifty-two eligible businesses with one-time twenty-five hundred dollar grants, and a senior meals program that provides two hundred and twenty-four residents' meals on a weekly basis. Next slide. During spring and summer twenty twenty, the city really leaned on the kindness and generosity of our community members, especially at a time when personal protective equipment was hard to come by. Residents and businesses generously donated thousands of pieces of PPE for our first responders to use and also for us to distribute to the community. Pictured are just a fraction of the donation drop-offs that took place at city hall. Next slide. These photos really give you a sense of the community in San Gabriel. At the height of the pandemic, when we saw panic and divisiveness in other communities, here in San Gabriel, we experienced neighbors lending a helping hand and sharing limited resources to pull through together. This community-mindedness is part of the fabric that makes San Gabriel the small but mighty city that it is. Next slide. To promote the small business grant program, the city hosted a press conference that was well-attended and had a great reach to promote the program to the community. Due to our outreach efforts and the need for financial assistance, we received four hundred and fifty-nine applications. The city council created an ad hoc business outreach subcommittee and appointed Vice Mayor Liao and Councilman Ding to work with the economic development staff on our efforts. The partnership between the subcommittee and our team has been a fruitful one, and staff appreciates their dedicated, their dedication and contributions. Next slide. In August, we hosted a socially distant and COVID-safe information and PPE drive through event at the Mission Playhouse parking lot. Staff across various departments pitched in to put together the San Gabriel Business Supply Kits and to make the event possible. The kits included the donated PPE, grant guidelines and applications, and other pertinent information all translated and available in Chinese, Vietnamese, and Spanish. We captured what businesses were able to participate and made sure that staff over the next few weeks made a point to distribute and hand-deliver the remaining business supply kits to the businesses that were unable to attend. Next slide, please. Under the ten-point plan, we also explored an opportunity to become more business-friendly to the film industry in Los Angeles County. In October, city council approved of the city aligning efforts with the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation, or LAADC, and Film LA's Film Friendliness Initiative, and approved of temporarily reduced and competitive permit fees. In December, council approved of a film and use agreement at a city facility that provided ten thousand dollars in improvements on site, as well as a twenty thousand dollar catering contract with the local San Gabriel small business. Efforts in becoming more film-friendly helps the city to compete for filming business and brings ancillary benefits such as crews spending money in town on gas, convenience items, catering, accommodations, and other boosts to our local economy. Next slide. In addition to business assistance, the city has prioritized housing efforts. It's been discussed at previous council meetings that we do not know the full extent of impacts of this pandemic on our community, which includes the impacts to our residents and their housing stability. This is a priority area that we are focusing on. In addition to updating relevant eviction moratorium information and ensuring that our community members are informed, the city is embarking on a housing element update, is in process of acquiring four oh five South Del Mar for an affordable housing development, has partnered with Habitat for Humanity San Gabriel for low-cost home improvement and upkeep opportunities, as well as partnered with the Council of Governments on a number of efforts. In January, we adopted the city's first homelessness response plan. City staff is currently administering a fifteen thousand dollar homeless prevention and diversion grant program. And we also participated in a city hygiene grant program to ensure hygiene stations were available at all city parks. We recently also started participating on the San Gabriel Unified School District's Homeless Advisory Council. Next slide, please. As city hall pivoted to doing business online, we planned for virtual workarounds. Our team established a biweekly e-newsletter that sent to seventeen hundred-plus community and business contacts to help keep everyone informed of changing protocols, financial resources, and programming. We held or participated in a number of webinars focused on community engagement, access to financial resources, and discussions with partner agencies about impacts and changes to industry, and how to plan for a post-pandemic San Gabriel. This helps us learn and implement some of the best practices, as well as share our local efforts with other agencies. Next slide. We reimagined our popular dumpling and beer event as a virtual tasting event, partnering with Mama's Dumpling House and Ogo Pogo Brewing Company. And we took advantage of seasonal marketing opportunities by producing a holiday gift guide and a Valentine's gift directory. Of course, we very much look forward to when we can hold in-person citywide events again. But in the meantime, we continue to plan creative and safe virtual events to keep the momentum going and to promote our businesses. Next slide. Our efforts in the next year include expanding the city's marketing effort through the official launch of Enjoy San Gabriel. We're looking at ways to address vacancies and new retail space that will be coming online with eighteen major developments on the horizon. We're currently having proactive discussions with our developers so that we're an involved partner in shaping the future of San Gabriel's retail space and seizing the opportunities that it will bring to the community. We will also be revamping the restaurant guide to reflect our new and renewed business license holders, focusing on promoting our foodie destinations by cuisine. Next slide. Now, as business continues to be impacted, there is a real opportunity to establish some financial assistance through the economic development budget and to help recovery efforts. With the city council's approval tonight, the Economic Development Division seeks to establish a business assistance fund which can assist our businesses on a case-by-case basis focused on industries most impacted by the pandemic. While our ten-point plan continues to waive fees associated with COVID nineteen compliance or programming, there are fees that we would be able to subsidize, including but not limited to business license renewal penalty fees, state refiling fees, or any other necessary licenses. These efforts can help our businesses to stay current with their licenses. And the Economic Development Development Division requests to set aside five thousand dollars of our existing budget with the hope that if additional federal COVID nineteen assistance funds are made available to the city, that city council consider expanding these assistance efforts. Next slide, please. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, and our city management for your continued support of our economic development efforts. This concludes my presentation. As staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Dominica. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report before we go to public comment? I see none. So now I'll make the announcement. The time for public comment on this item is now closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
We have no comments this evening, Mayor.
And I'll turn it back to council. Is there any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor Liao.
Yeah, so I I really want to thank our staff from bottom of my heart, you know, because they have done so much. Think of those gift bags. I just couldn't believe that they spent so much time putting thousands of those gift bags. It was hand-sanitized their own mess. And it's it's tremendous work, but they did it. They know so we we have about four hundred and fifty-nine people apply for small business grants, and we have go through that lottery system. And we only can give, you know, twenty twenty-eight at first time and the twenty-four the second time. But again, it's a lot of work, you know, because they have to look at all each business license and to verify and see if they are accurate. And so I I just want to commend our staff that give us. It's such a wonderful job. And I I like the idea that come up with this. It it's called Business Assistance Fund, and of course, you know, just five thousand for now. But, you know, last week, attend the National League, right away, they already announced the good news. You know, through the, you know, because I. You know, through the, you know, because I joined, this is called the Lake of California City Local Recovery Coalition. So we formed this group as a strong advocacy. At first, we asked the Congress to separate the funding from cities and from the county. So, you know, the cities get 65 billions and the county will also get 65 billions. I mean, no more the population, 500,000 population restrictions. So that's good news. So the city of San Gabriel is going to receive 7.51 million dollars from this American Rescue Plan, and which is good news. So, you know, we're talking about, oh, maybe we'll set aside 5,000 now, but I wish, yeah, maybe from this 7.51 million. I don't know, you know, this is my question. Can we use a sum of the funding that we can set aside for this small business assistance fund? Or are we going to do another small business grants? You know, that's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be more than happy to answer that. And thanks to Dom and Armini for putting the program and the presentation together. Yes, to answer your question, the $5,000 is the amount that we have in our budget now. But the plan is, once we receive from the U.S. Treasury Department what the requirements are going to be for us to collect that 7.51 million, we will be coming back to the city council to program that. And I can see a staff recommendation included with that to set aside some of that for business grants, because I've heard from several council members over the past year that specifically the restaurants that have been hit the hardest and have had extra costs with outdoor dining and some of their other increases, that that would be something that potentially would be supported. So the short answer is, that's something we will bring back in the next month or so as those regulations are put out by that government.
Great, thank you, Mark. But also, I received, well, not too many, but, you know, just a few phone calls regarding the tenants' rent relief. Because the last time we did, you know, provide $1,000 rent relief, but we didn't, you know, get if not people qualified, even though we have quite a few applied, but not all qualified. But as I understand, the California also provide a rent-revenue program. As long as they, as a matter of fact, it starts today. It's working today. If they apply, you know, if they, actually, the landlords, even they want to apply, to receive 80% of the rents that owe by the tenants, and they're willing to forgive that 20%, you know. So I think that's something maybe we could do also. You know, just to give out the information, and maybe we also can provide the tenants' relief fund. Again, you know, it depends how many will to apply. But I think a lot of tenants, they don't know about this California law, and they don't know how to apply, you know, again, because the language barrier, and you have to log into their website. And there are two questions. One is for landlord and one is for tenants. And you have to fill out a lot of forms. Okay, so that's another concern for me, you know, because most of the tenants, they don't know how to do this type of thing. And, and, you know, if we, I don't know, we have the capacity to bring the tenants and landlords together. I don't know. I don't think we could. But maybe we could provide some kind of a, you know, help, especially in different languages, and say, hey, you know, this is how you apply and just fill out the forms. And, you know, rental agreements, that's probably easy, and maybe the financial statement. And if they can provide that, also, if they receive any unemployment checks or anything. And for the landlord, they have to provide more, you know, they have to provide probably tax, insurance, whatever. It's just a list of things that landlord has to go through. So that's another thing, you know, if we want to help the tenants, we've got to have some kind of a assistance that we can provide to them. So I don't know, again, you know, we don't, you know, we don't have that type of resources. And, you know, in the past, I thought maybe we could set aside a portion of the fund from this American Rescue Act in a small amount, and maybe assign to a nonprofit group, you know, a third party, and let them work with the tenants, and that's probably, it's better for both the city and also the tenants that need help. So that's just my suggestion. Maybe, you know, when we receive the money, then we can talk about it. And I know there will be in two different payments, you know, now all at once, the same 0.5 million. But I think this is something we can work on in the future, because actually, you know, the work is just begun, you know, because we need to make sure everyone is, can be recovered from this pandemic. And of course, you know, we want to help our small business owners, but also we want to help our community members. And so that's, that's something we have to work on in the future. But anyway, again, you know, I'm so grateful for our staff's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? Councilmember Ding and then Councilmember Pooh.
Okay, yeah, so I quote the Vice Mayor, the, yeah, say, our staff is really working hard. What does this subcommittee, like, thanks to Armani, Dominica, Claudia. So we have a couple of the subcommittee meeting, so they have a very, very good idea. I like, I still want to like, like, the idea, the three directions. Housing Relief Program, Small Business, the Grant Program, and the Senior Meal. I think for the community, most of their reaction is, it's really good. That's the meaning. They are really appreciate our city to the decent, cover these three category and help our community. Yeah, and, yeah, if we can, like, continue to do the, like, right now, Dominica, the presentation have the business assistant grant, it's a good idea. And, yeah, right now, it's a small amount, but I just like, just make sure after we, after council approve, and hopefully, we have the, like, a good, like, guideline. So who can qualify, but we try to do the, like, more transparency, right, if the people apply that, okay? And in the housing relief, I think, because after we, first time, we think about let the tenant apply and pay to the landlord, and also based on the guideline, it's a federal or state guideline, it's maybe a lot of restriction. And, but I don't know, for the future, it's a what kind of guideline? But maybe for the, like, also incent, have to encourage their apply. Maybe when they, the tenant apply for the landlord, we maybe both give to them some, like, dollar amount, you know. So maybe can use time, this kind of direction, but I don't know. I just have some idea, but I just give to Dominica some, maybe recommendation. So probably, hope, like, more people, if it really, they really need assistance, we really can help them, you know. So, yeah, that's, yeah, that's my comment. Yeah, it's, thanks to the, our subcommittee, they're working hard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pooh.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank our economic development team, Dominica, Meridichan, Armin H. F. Ryan, and Claudia Gellin. Guys have worked really hard throughout the pandemic to assist our business community and tenants that have applied for the housing relief program. And also want to thank and recognize Vice Mayor Liao and Councilmember Ding. They've also worked very hard through this process as well. So I just wanted to ask, since I know you probably have already started thinking about this, if not already implementing it, you know, with LA County moving into the red tier yesterday, how, what, what else we might be looking at on the horizon in terms of helping our businesses reopen to the limited extent that they're allowed to? And, you know, again, as we've been saying, pivot and adapt to the new, the new rules.
Thank you, Councilman Pooh. Just today, I had a meeting with Joe Chen, our building official. One of the big changes with moving to the red tier and reopening the indoor business capacity is identifying what everyone's capacities are, because it's a complicated formula. So tomorrow, you'll see an e-newsletter go out from our team, sharing that formula, folks feel comfortable calculating for themselves. But we will be extending the economic development team's assistance. They just need to submit very basic information to us. We'll help with those calculations. That's going to be our number one priority, as well as pushing and making sure that our outdoor businesses, their setups are compliant with the updated protocols. So that's number one on our list, to make sure that businesses can stay open and comply, that they're not getting in trouble, and that they're trying to open to the maximum capacity while staying compliant and safe. That's number one on our list.
Just a quick follow-up to, and maybe we haven't gone this far down the road yet, but I know some places that are, you know, previously just open for takeout only, don't have perhaps the full set of PPE that I think is now required if they were doing indoor dining, meaning like face shield. I mean, almost universally that I've seen in San Gabriel, people are wearing masks, of course. But I think that, if to allow for indoor dining, there's additional PP and stuff. So is there going to be an education campaign and/or do we think we'd be able to even provide some of those types of additional items or whatever other safety protocols? Because to be honest, I have not yet read the addendum where the new, all the new rules are sort of set out. But, but I'm sure you guys have, and I can, I could see that, you know, some of our businesses might need some assistance in complying with those new protocols.
Definitely. Thank you for that, Councilman Pooh. On Friday, we did have the update go out with the e-newsletter with the updated health orders. And folks are becoming more aware of the changes. And as we continue to push the ability to facilitate curbside delivery, plug pickup. So if they don't currently have that, we do see that as a big business model. Not only that came through from 2020, but it's probably something that's here to stay. So we are helping businesses facilitate and figure out how to provide that offering. It helps with the flow and helps them do better business in San Gabriel as well.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I have a few. First of all, this dill, everything that's been said about this amazing team. You guys have really stepped up. You are one of many departments who just, you know, brought some new plans, implemented them, and have been very, very effective. And I'm glad that we'll be continuing on with that same level of zest and creativity. So, so thank you to everyone for continuing these efforts. The first thing I was going to mention was the senior meals. I know, you know, it was the State of City Address where, you know, Bon Chong had contributed as well as the mosque for the senior meals. But I was hoping that, you know, I know some of our businesses have actually done very well because they had a business model that was very conducive to COVID. You know, they already had a lot of those mechanisms in place. And, and I'm hoping as more and more restaurants learn to adopt a new normal, that maybe some of them may want to contribute to our senior meals. And so kind of give that open opportunity. It gives them some visibility, but also helps us in stretching our dollars even more. I still believe there's a lot of restaurants out there that want to help out in any way they can, and especially those who are doing very, very well during this COVID. So I don't know if you can kind of do like an outreach of sorts, maybe with your newsletter, just saying, the opportunity is here to serve our seniors and make it, make it, get some restaurants who would be interested. The other thing I wanted to kind of touch bases, you know, we will be, it seems like we're going to be moving very quickly unless something happens, so red and orange. But I know there are concerns with our restaurants, back to restaurants, that they have made a significant investment for the outdoor dining. And then for us to take it away, you know, once we get to that norm, or whatever that means. Are there any plans or any thoughts of allowing them to stay with this outdoor plan? Or are we going to take it away? I know you're not going to take it away. But there needs to be some planning, because it was, it's been hard. I mean, there's been businesses who invested 20, 30,000 just so they can continue on, and they had to stop, and then now they're back on. But I think this is one area during this pandemic that people actually like it. You know, they're able to either redo their roofs or to, they literally expanded square footage by doing the outdoor. But then you've got the parking situation, so I'd just like to hear your thoughts about that.
Thank you, Mayor. While the Temporary Outdoor Business Program is called temporary, we set it up in such a way that we would be able to pivot and help businesses figure out if they wanted to make it a more permanent fixture and offering. While that may take away, it might pivot a little bit from what you're seeing right now. If you drive down Valley, you see a lot of the plazas and parking spaces are taken over by these outdoor sitting. We will have to bring that parking back. As long as the restaurants are impacted with a limited capacity indoors, we plan to keep the temporary fixtures up. But we're happy to work with any business that's interested in pivoting it to a more permanent stance and looking at it with a more permanent lens. Additionally, in our conversations with developers and the projects that are in entitlement or coming online, we're already having these discussions of what have we learned from the pandemic? And what can we improve in these new developments that are coming online that might be able to pivot a little bit, provide some flexibility, promote some outdoor business? Because if anything, we've learned maximizing outdoor capacities is healthier for everyone. So that's already something that we're trying to be proactive about and make sure that folks are incorporating as a plan for new business space as well.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So I am done with my questions. This is an item that we need to vote, so I'm going to move that for the recommended action, which is staff recommends city council receive and file the update on the ten-point plan and establish the Business Assistance Fund. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I second it.
And Vice Mayor Beechey. So we have a first and second. If there's no further comments, Assistant City Clerk, let's take the vote.
Councilmember Ding.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Pooh.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Liao.
Aye.
Mayor Manchaca.
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no public comment for this section.
Okay, next item, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick items. One, a huge congratulations to you on the State of the City Address. I thought it came off really well. I hope folks go out and watch it on the YouTube channel, because the quality is excellent, as you said, and a lot of hard work went into that. And I think it captures the year that you were able to lead through. And I've done a phenomenal job, but I'll save those comments for next time when we do our ceremonial part of the change into the mayor. And secondly, I had on my list, and I'm glad Dominica introduced it. I'm very proud to say that that team has gone out and met with our development community to talk about retail, what it looks like in 2020. to talk about retail, what it looks like in 2022 and beyond. And we're going to bring a presentation back to city council so that we can tell you all, you know, firsthand with a presentation on what the kinds of things that developers are asking us to make changes to. And as Dom kind of hinted, things like increased outdoor dining, having more open space and not only for people to recreate in, but also to eat and shop and that kind of thing. And we've heard back kind of surprisingly that that folks are optimistic about retail, maybe a little more than we assume that they would be. So rather than, you know, bring that back piece by piece with different projects, Dom and Arminia and Claudia are going to bring back a full presentation on that in in April. So I'm I'm proud to say that we're looking forward to that. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments, too. Hey, Council, any comments, conference meeting notes, anything?
Thank you. Thank you. I attend the National League of City Conference. Want to think that they brought it up is the PayPal. PayPal also offer $250,000 small business grant. And, you know, if any of this is using PayPal, it's very easy to qualify, especially for those businesses. They haven't got the first round, the PPP loans, but this this is something I I would encourage anyone, you know, to apply. But I I'm so happy that we we are kind of getting over this pandemic now slowly opened up. But again, you know, I would I would advise everyone still wearing mask, kids social distance. Make sure we're still safe to go through this final stage. So this is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Council? Councilmember Pooh.
I just wanted to thank and congratulate you, Mayor Manchaca, on extraordinary year and a successful year despite all of the challenges. I really do think that you handled it with with poise, with grace and graciousness. And, you know, also want to note that, you know, as the first Latina ever elected to the city council here in the city of San Gabriel and the first Latina to ever serve as mayor for our city, that you definitely represented yourself well. And, you know, despite all the challenges, we still got a lot done. That's a large part, big credit to our, you know, our team, the executive team and the staff and employees of the city. Again, it's been an extraordinary year and full of challenges, but also I think full of accomplishments. And so I just wanted to say thank you, congratulations, and that you should be proud of the work that we've been able to do during the during the course of this year.
Thank you, Councilmember Pooh. I'm going to be reserving Mike's comments for the next meeting. I'll try to comply with the city manager for the last time, but thank you for those comments. Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, okay, Mayor. Okay, congratulations. Yeah, yeah, the time so fast and the you're mayor one year. I'm the new council member one year. Okay, and you don't have a chance, I don't have a chance in the in the council chamber to installation. But I I really appreciate even the pandemic and but I also appreciate the this city staff, the established virtual meeting, help us and 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 the mayor leadership to have the we have the even pandemic one year. We everything going through, okay, we still keep our city running, safety. And and when important, like the on the on the mayor state, it's we I I glad saw our deficit. It's reduced even even COVID-19. So it's amazing. So, yeah, it's mayor and the and the market, both okay, work together and an amazing job. Yeah, so the congratulation. And and also I super this, I still thanks the all the staff and whatever I question asking, they try help me to understanding. I really appreciate work together. And also I thanks the Vice Mayor Chin Chin, Vice Liao and Councilmember Harrington and Councilmember Pooh and I learning from all of you a lot for how to attend the council meeting. I, yeah, for me, it's a one year. It's I'm still a student. I continue learning from all of you. Okay. And yeah, thank you all of you. And but oh, I also need to thanks the thanks the Sue for the San Gabriel K9, the president. And the it's it's working a lot of year. I don't know how many years she working for the K9, the fundraising. And also because she brought up and and our San Gabriel Hope Line Cup, the their president and a member to help it's quickly within like two weeks, at least raise the $1,200 for the K9, the current year, the insurance. Yeah. So, yeah, I really use this opportunity to thanks the San Gabriel Hope Line. So that's meaning our community also supported us to help us. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Harrington?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to echo the comments from my councilmembers. It's been a difficult year. And I know like the first time you're mayor, the first three months, you're getting used to the job and it's you were thrown into the fire right away. So I really appreciate the fact that we were able to kind of steady the course. And I really appreciate the leadership you've shown us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. I will reserve my comments for the next meeting. So so thank you to all of you. It was a pleasure working with all of you. So next item, we will now return to new business item B, city council reorganization, which will be conducted by our chief city clerk. So I will now turn it to her.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now select a new mayor and vice mayor for the coming year. As our city manager mentioned, please note that recognition of our outgoing mayor and our incoming mayor and vice mayor will be held as the first presentation item on the agenda for the regular city council meeting of April 6. We'll move to selection of mayor. I now declare the offices of mayor and vice mayor vacant. The floor is now open for nominations for the selection of mayor. Are there any nominations for mayor?
Yes, I would like to nominate Chin Hau Lao, councilmember, vice mayor Lao, or councilmember, I'm sorry, Chin Hau Lao.
Are there any other nominations for mayor? Okay, hearing none, I close the floor to nominations and declare that Chin Hau Liao is selected as mayor by acclamation. I will now administer the oath of office. Councilmember, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chin Hau Liao.
I, Chin Hau Liao.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge of duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon the which I'm about to enter.
Congratulate, congratulations, Mayor Liao.
Thank you.
I will now turn the meeting over to you for the conduct of the remainder of the meeting and the selection of vice mayor.
Okay, well, selection of the vice mayor, the floor now is open for nominations for the selection of vice mayor. There any nominations for vice mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Of course.
Thank you. You know, it has been an extraordinary year and the, you know, this entire year has been virtual for our meetings and I'm sure it's been difficult for both our former mayor, Mayor Manchaca, and and for our, you know, newest council member, Councilmember Ding. And in light of that, I would like to nominate Councilmember Ding to be the new vice mayor as a way of being able to, in some way, you know, bring him into the to the bring him further into the council family. And I think that he has shown himself to have been able to learn and adapt during this difficult year as well as anybody. And, you know, I think I would look forward to having his leadership, you know, one year from now as as our mayor of the city of San Gabriel.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Pooh. There any other nominations for vice mayor? Okay, hearing none, I close the floor to nominations.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'm ready.
Yeah. Okay, so I really appreciate the Councilmember Pooh nominated me to become the vice mayor. Yeah, but actually, it's a it's a for me a surprise. It's 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 not my expecting, but I expecting like I already learning from the a lot of things from the Councilmember Pooh. And when I got elected and current year with the council, right now, just call, okay, Councilmember. Machanga, okay, and and also have the chance of learning from the 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 mayor Liao. And and I wish also the have learning something the from the councilmember Harrington. Okay, so I don't know, I I can't, I can't, because I got a nominee, can I nominate the councilmember Harrington?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
And and you don't have to accept the nomination, your nomination, if you don't want.
I, yeah, okay, but I I I appreciate the the councilmember Pooh, the nomination. Yeah, so for myself. Yeah.
So, well, I guess, City Clerk, then we have two nominations, then we'll just vote, I guess.
I, well, I'm sorry, as the nominating council member, I would like to clarify then, does Councilmember Ding accept the nomination or or no? Because if not, then there might not be a need for a vote, but
Yeah, yeah, for the for the I, yeah, for me, I also to follow the whatever the I respect the councilmember Pooh, the nominee me, so I accept it. Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we have one, yeah, nominations for Councilmember Ding. And do we have to get acceptance from Councilmember Harrington?
I'm fine with Councilmember Ding becoming vice mayor. I've voted for him anyway, so.
All right. Well, I guess, you know, both of you are very modest and I guess we'll have to vote the first nomination. That's Councilmember Ding.
Actually, but Mayor Lao, I'll just decline the nomination.
Okay, all right. So we already have one. Yeah, we already have one nominations. And I guess we don't have to vote, right? Because, Kate, is that the situation?
As with the other one, I guess you can now do it by acclamation.
Okay, so congratulations, Vice Mayor Ding. Congratulations. So we're gonna start the new city council from April 6. So there's no closed section for today. And we're gonna adjourn the meeting. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 6, 2021, at 6:30 PM. So meetings adjourn and congratulations to Councilmember Ding, now becomes the vice mayor Ding.
Congratulations, Mayor Liao.
Congratulations, Mayor Liao and Vice Mayor Ding.
At one hour to to congratulate our mayor Manchaca for such an amazing job.
Next time, next time. You've already adjourned the meeting. Thank you.
We are the most modest council in all of California.
It's gonna be a great year.